All right. Hello, everybody, and welcome to the August 24th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. This is a web-based call, and we're operating under the following procedures. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. A recording of the video will be available within 24 hours and will be posted to the Town of Waterford's Planning Department website. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they are speaking. If an attendee creates an audio or visual disruption, the Zoom moderator may place them on mute or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. There are two public hearings scheduled for this evening. For each hearing, please listen for the chair to announce the public comment period. When the chair announces that period, you may give your comments in the following manner. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom and wait to be called on. Before the hearing closes, we'll ask for any new comments from people who are only able to join by phone or unable to use the raise hand feature. If multiple people attempt to speak at once, staff will help to moderate. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about the process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Monday to Friday.
Okay, so I will now call the roll. Greg Massad.
Here.
John Bashaw.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale. Not here. Ken Patrini.
Here.
Karen Barnett.
Here.
Joe DeBono. Not here.
Okay, so we have, we have four members. We have enough for a quorum. We don't have an alternate here tonight to replace Tim, so we're gonna go with four. Item number two. Do you want to make a motion to approve the August 10th meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the, approve the minutes.
Motion made by John, seconded by.
I'll second.
By Ken, all in favor of approving the August 10th, 2020 meeting minutes as submitted. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, four to nothing. Move on to number three, receipt of applications. Abby, do we have any applications?
We do not, no.
Okay, that's easy. Item number four. Public hearings, we have two of them. Why don't we just take them right in order? First one is PL 21-8, Request of Dunn Associates Applicant to amend the zoning regulations. Sections 3.22, 3.22.1, 3.22.2, and 11.2.11, as they pertain to parking of recreational camping vehicles. Attorney Sweeney, are you here for that?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, would you like to proceed?
Thank you very much. Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney.
Before we start, can we just read the exhibit list into the record real quick?
Yeah, I don't, sure, can you read that into the record?
Yep, yep.
Okay, this is the exhibit list for application PL 21-8. Exhibit one, application and support material. Item A is the application. Item B, letter dated July 6, 2021, to the Planning and Zoning Commission from Attorney William Sweeney, concerning regulation amendment, recreational camping vehicles. Item C, proposed amendments of Sections 3.22 and 11.2 of the zoning regulations. Exhibit two, notice of public hearing advertised in the day newspaper on August 10 and August 17, 2021. Exhibit three, certified copy of the zoning regulations effective through March 2, 2021. Exhibit four, hearing notice to applicant dated August 4, 2021. Exhibit five, page 54 of the 2012 Plan of Preservation, Conservation, and Development. Exhibit six is a staff report. And that's it.
Great, thank you for that. Sorry about that, Attorney Sweeney, if you can.
Not a problem. Absolutely. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Again, for the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and a land use attorney at the law firm of Tobin Carberry in New London, Connecticut, and it's a pleasure, as always, to be back before you this evening. I serve as counsel for Dunn Associates, which is a Niantic-based commercial developer that specializes in self-storage facilities. Joining me tonight on the call is Mike Dunn. Mike is a principal of Dunn Associates. My client, through various affiliates, currently operates self-storage facilities here in Connecticut, including one that you are all probably very familiar with, the Crossroad Rent-a-Space here in Waterford. My client is currently exploring opportunities for expansion of his businesses throughout southeastern Connecticut and is considering an additional location here in Waterford. As the commission may be aware, modern self-storage facilities are quite different than the facilities that were built 20 or 30 years ago now. Americans have a significant appetite for self-storage, but today, they now demand much more elaborate facilities, including climate-controlled space and outdoor storage options. New self-storage facilities, and I've been involved in a number of recent projects over the last few years, almost always include designated areas for the storage of larger personal items, such as boats, trailers, and recreational vehicles. Bottom line is, people don't want to store these in their residential properties or near their homes. This type of storage is especially in demand in communities like Waterford, which have limitations on the storage of such items in residential neighborhoods. Unfortunately, while most towns actually encourage the storage of these larger personal items outside of residential zones and commercial, and especially in industrial zones, the particular language of the Waterford regulations makes it difficult to find alternative locations specifically for what you'd call recreational camping vehicles, or otherwise known as RVs. Currently, Waterford allows the storage of all types of vehicles and equipment in certain industrial zones by special permit, but the storage of, quote, "recreational camping vehicles" is not explicitly allowed in these same locations. For example, Section 11.2 of your zoning regulations today allows for sale, storage, repair, or rental of automobiles, trucks, trailers, boats, motorcycles, construction equipment, and agricultural equipment in the IG zone by special permit, but that list omits recreational camping vehicles altogether. In fact, based on the language included in Section 3.22 of your regulations, your provision for the storage of recreation, recreational camping vehicles in residential districts inadvertently prohibits their storage elsewhere in the community. Currently, Section 3.22 prohibits the storage of a recreational camping vehicle on any lot in town unless that lot contains a dwelling as a primary use, and then only generally a single RV is permitted. And the purpose of this provision is clearly, I think, I think we can all agree, is to prevent the proliferation of RVs in our residential neighborhoods, but the language that was selected when that regulation was adopted prohibits RVs elsewhere in town outside of those same neighborhoods where you don't have a principal dwelling unit, such as industrial zones. That makes little sense to me, it makes little sense to my client, and when we talked to staff, I think everybody realized that this was an oversight, an unintended consequence of the regulations' language. Abby, do I have the ability to share the screen?
I have, I have the language up in front of me as well. Is that, do you want to pull that up?
Yeah, if you can just put the language up from the text amendment. Terrific, that's perfect. Yeah, thank you. So on behalf of my client, who would like to develop a self-storage here, a new self-storage facility here in Waterford without door parking for recreational camping vehicles, what we've done is submitted an amendment to your zoning regulations that, one, explicitly allows the storage of recreational camping vehicles in the IG district by special permit, but also it clarifies that the existing restrictions and limitations on the storage of recreational camping vehicles on residential lots is limited just to that, to residential lots, and does not apply to the storage on lots in other districts. So before you, on the screen, is the actual amendments that are being proposed to Sections 3.22 and Section 11.2, and then the subsections below. Like I said, the changes to Section 3.22 are fairly simple and straightforward. We're adding the word "residential" throughout that section to make clear that the limitations of this particular provision apply only to residential lots, and if you read through that section, I think that was certainly the intent when it was passed some time ago. And then in Section 11.2.11, which is the special permit uses in the IG district, we add recreational camping vehicles to the list of large vehicles permitted in the IG zone, again, only by special permit. From our perspective, the changes that we're making are modest, they're narrowly tailored, and they correct what we think is an inadvertent failure to allow for the storage of such vehicles outside of residential lots. I would also point out that I think there's a solid basis provided in your plan of conservation and development for the proposed changes. One of the most important aspects of your plan is making sure that the zoning regulations protect, preserve, and enhance existing residential neighborhoods. That's a keystone element of your plan of conservation and development. And I think because you have a section already, like 3.22, I think your zoning regulations already recognize that the proliferation of recreational camping vehicles and their storage in residential neighborhoods can have a negative impact. These changes will provide residents of Waterford the opportunity to store their RVs in properly designed and located facilities, properly screened in industrial districts, and that will ultimately reduce, from our perspective, the overall number of such vehicles that may be located in residential neighborhoods. And so for that reason, I think these amendments indirectly protect, preserve, and enhance the existing residential neighborhoods in Waterford. So that, that concludes my presentation tonight. You have the proposal before you. I want to thank you for your time and attention, and both myself and Mr. Dunn are available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I actually didn't prepare anything to say.
You don't have to.
Yeah, no, I'd be very, usually I'm not at a loss for words. I would be very happy to answer any questions. I, I do want to also say, by the way, for the record, I assume I should tell you that Mike Dunn is my name, and my address is 7 Plant Drive, Waterford, is my home address. Yeah, our intention is for a high-end self-storage facility that would attract customers that will store their belongings in a climate-controlled facility, and the plan is 100% climate control. It would be, the property would be secured by a fence around the entire perimeter. There'd be an access gate that would be controlled with a unique access code for each customer. So we have a computer that tracks who comes and goes. We know who is in the facility any time, what time, we'll have security cameras. Just wanted to say that a staff had asked the question, well, geez, could someone actually spend a night in one of these campers? That would be specifically prohibited in their lease, and we will have security cameras that will tell us if that ever happens, and so that won't be an issue.
If I could just interrupt, Mr. Dunn, tonight, we're just on a regulation amendment, I would probably save any of those comments to a particular application.
I. Understood.
It's up to you, it's up to you in your turn, but I, this is just for a regulation amendment tonight, not as.
Mr. Chairman, I would echo that, but that is exactly the only thing that's in front of you, and obviously, if this is approved, these amendments, then our plan for a self-storage facility would come before this board again, where the specifics of it, and the inclusion of parking for RVs would be part of that plan. But again, this, this is the first step. This regulation has to pass, this amendment has to pass, before we add that element into a plan that we hope to be before you this fall with.
Okay, so, Mr. Dunn, you're free to say whatever you want. I just wanted you to know that that's the only thing in front of us tonight.
Yeah, I, yeah, I apologize. I do understand what you're talking about. You're, you're looking at a text amendment to your regulation that would imply to the whole town not looking at my project, and, yeah, I was a little off track. That's all I have to say, unless you have questions.
Okay, does anybody have questions before we ask the public? Anybody have questions of Attorney Sweeney or Mr. Dunn? With respect to the amendment?
This is John Bashaw. I just have one question. I, I think, I understand the change. I understand what you're trying to accomplish, and I understand the change to Section 11.2.11. I just have a general question about the specificity in Section 3.22 to residential lots. What does that mean with respect to the storage of recreational camping, camping vehicles on non-residential lots that are not within the IG district?
Great question. The, the simple answer is that on non-residential lots, if the zone in which that non-residential lot does not specifically enumerate the storage of an RV on it, then that use is prohibited. And that is sort of the way your regulations are set up, that uses that are not listed as a permitted use, permitted use by site plan approval, permitted use by special permit, are implied to be prohibited in that zone. So you, as a commission, may decide that there are other zones in town where the storage of RVs is appropriate, and you could take action to add that, but right now, this is the one place where recreational camping vehicles will be allowed, is in the IG district. But it's an excellent question.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Attorney Sweeney or Mr. Dunn? And Karen? I did have a question just for, and probably for discussion for Abby or Mark, but are we, by putting residential lot in there, are we making somebody who lives in a home in a non-residential district non-conforming?
No, I think, as Attorney Sweeney enumerated, if it's not a residential property, let's pull the language up real quick. So it refers to residential lot, so where single-family homes may be allowed in other districts such as R20, R40, or RE120, or those, those elements, or where the residential, where it's a legal, non-conforming residential lot that has existed as such. The way this is phrased, I believe you would be able to have an RV stored in those areas, because we're not talking about which zones. Here, we're talking about residential lots categorically. When it comes to other non-residential lots in any zone, then that's where I think the provision that Attorney Sweeney was talking about would come into effect.
Great. Okay, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on this regulation amendment? Application PL 21-8. So any member of the public? Ask a second time if there's any member of the public who would like to speak with respect to PL 21-8 regulation amendment? For the third time, any member of the public wishing to speak on public, on PL-21-8 zoning regulation amendment? I don't have anybody who's wished to speak. Anybody want to move to close the public hearing?
I'll move, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, move to close the public hearing by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ken, all in favor of closing the public hearing for PL-21-8, Request of Dunn Associates. See if I'm saying hi.
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 Four to nothing to close the public hearing. Let's move on to the next one, Mr. Sweeney, PL-21-9, Request of John Lombardi Jr., owner and applicant for two lot re-subdivision, and request for waiver of Section 5.3.8, Flaglots of the Subdivision Regulations for Property Located at 198 Shore Road, R40 Zone, as shown on plans entitled Lombardi Re-subdivision dated July 10, 2021. The coastal site plan review is required in accordance with the Coastal Management Act. Public hearing must close by 9:28:21. Abby, do we have an exhibit list for this? You want to read in the record?
We do, Mark.
Yes.
Following is the exhibit list for application PL-21-9. Exhibit one, application and support material. Item A, planning and zoning application. Item B, CAM application. Item C, letter dated July 23, 2021, from Attorney William Sweeney, regarding Lombardi Re-subdivision Statement of Use and Consistency with POCD, 198 Shore Road, Waterford, Connecticut. Item D, CAM report. Exhibit two, Lombardi Re-subdivision Plan dated July 10, 2021. Exhibit three, DEEP referral letter dated July 27, 2021, sent to Karen Michaels, Land and Water Resources Division. Exhibit four, notice of public hearing advertised in the day newspaper on August 11, 2021, and August 17, 2021. Exhibit five, hearing notification letter to applicant dated August 3, 2021, along with certificates of mailing. Exhibit six, DEEP review comments dated August 3, 21. Exhibit seven, letter of determination of a conservation commission. Exhibit eight, Lombardi Re-subdivision Plan, revised to August 5, 21. Exhibit nine, staff report dated August 5, 2021.
Okay, great, thank you. Attorney Sweeney, you're up again.
Thank you, Chairman Massad. Members of the commission, again, good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and land use attorney at the T-Corps Law Firm in New London, Connecticut. On this application, I represent John Lombardi Jr., who is a resident of 198 Shore Road here in Waterford, Connecticut. And on behalf of Mr. Lombardi, I've submitted a re-subdivision application and an ancillary coastal area management application for a two-lot re-subdivision of his property, which is located in an R40 residential district and is within the coastal area management zone. Abby, if, can you please put a copy of the subdivision plan up if possible? Terrific, thank you so much. So this re-subdivision before you tonight is, is a re-subdivision of a 2.07-acre parcel, which entails the division of that parcel into two conforming R40 district lots. Lot one, which would be, if maybe, Abby, if you could show, is the frontage lot with the cursor. This lot is approximately 0.9 acres in size, and then Lot two, which is the rear or flag lot, this is 1.08 acres respectively, and both are to be utilized for single-family residential purposes. The proposed lots meet or exceed all bulk and dimensional requirements for the R40 district. And this application that's before you tonight is consistent with the purpose of the underlying zoning district, which is a single-family zoning district, as well as your plan of conservation and development, as the proposal allows for a modest lot division of an existing property while still protecting and preserving the existing neighborhood character and the overall residential density of the surrounding neighborhood. Lot number one, which is up front, which is the frontage lot, you can see on it today currently includes a carriage house and garage on the plan. It's a, it's sort of that stippled area on, which is the existing garage on the property. And then Lot number two, which is in the rear, has Mr. Lombardi's existing residence, which overlooks the waters of Jordan Cove. Both lots under this plan would be accessed by the existing driveway off of Shore Road, and there would be, as a condition of any approval of this re-subdivision, there would need to be an access and utility easement recorded in favor of Lot two, which is for the existing residence, over Lot one. And so that would be recorded, should be a condition of any re-subdivision approval. As you can tell, the proposed re-subdivision would effectively separate the freestanding carriage house garage on the property from the existing residence, so each would sit on its own parcel at the end of the subdivision. However, pursuant to your zoning regulations, which requires a principal building on each lot, the carriage house garage must either be converted to a principal residence, or it must be demolished. We discussed this issue with staff prior to application, and then we confirmed with your town council, Attorney Robert Avina, and it was agreed that a condition of approval can be added to the plan, that this conversion must be complete within one year of approval, or the plan would be voided. So you'd either have to, Mr. Lombardi will have to convert that garage to an actual principal residence, or he'll have to demolish it, one or the other, within one year of approval. As you can see on the plan, for your benefit, we, we showed you what his intention is, and that is to actually keep the carriage house garage, put an addition onto it, as well as a greenhouse, and convert it, the entire structure, to a permanent principal residence within the stated timeframe. As explained in our application materials, both lots and both principal residences will be served by public water and sewer, so there's no wells or septic systems involved in this proposal. As I said before in my initial remarks, both lots are located within your coastal management zone that associated with Jordan Cove, but there's no anticipated impacts to adjacent or onsite coastal resources proposed as a result of this division of land. You can see as well, even the addition that we intend someday, within the next year, to put on the carriage house garage is far distant from any sensitive resource area. I should note, and I think this is in the file already, that the Conservation Commission reviewed this plan and noted that there are no regulated activities proposed to any inland wetland or water source areas associated with the brook that runs along the southeast corner of the property and out into Jordan Cove. Likewise, to the extent that there may be some tidal wetlands at the far southwestern corner of the existing lot, they will not be impacted by this lot division. I did, do know, I was notified by staff that some commission members had some questions about the tidal wetland situation on the property. On our application, you'll note that no tidal wetlands are identified on the application materials, but on the CAM, it does suggest that there's onsite wetlands, and let me explain that what would be an apparent discrepancy, but was actually purposeful. There is an area on the southwest corner of the site, and Abby, if you use the cursor, if you could just go to the bottom left-hand side, you can see there's a retaining wall, sea wall there. There is an area of the lot that's above mean-high water, which is actually at the mouth of that brook, and it is likely that there is probably some tidal wetland vegetation in that area along the actual mean-high waterline. Your subdivision regulations do not require the mapping of tidal wetlands. They only require the mapping of inland wetland areas, which we have done, associated with the brook, to the point where the tidal influence begins to affect the brook. But we expect that there is probably some tidal wetlands in this area, but as you can see from our, our design, there is no proposed impacts to that area, and it's difficult to quantify them if you haven't mapped them. So there may be some tidal wetlands in this area at the mouth, but again, it's a small area, probably, if there are tidal wetlands, it's probably less than 500 square feet. The other item I wanted to bring to your attention is that we're seeking a waiver of Section 5.3.8 of the subdivision regulations, and that is to allow for more than 20% of the proposed lots to qualify as flag lots. Obviously, we only have two lots in this subdivision, so if one of them is a flag lot, 50% of our lots are flag lots. In fact, any subdivision here in town, less than five lots, is basically runs afoul of this issue. You need to have five lots to even be able to have just one lot meeting that 20% requirement. I understand we had discussions in the early days of the pre-application of this, of this project, that this is an issue that's come before the commission before on, you know, one or two lot subdivisions. I understand that similar waivers of that requirement have been granted by this commission for this reason in the recent past. I would note, however, and I know at least one commission member had a concern that was passed along to me via staff, that under Section 5.7.1.1 of your subdivision regulations, the commission has to make certain findings when it. the commission has to make certain findings, um, when it grants a waiver, even of the waiver, uh, of the twenty percent rule. Um, and the commission must find if they're granting the waiver that, that that waiver will not be detrimental to public safety, health or welfare, or have a significant adverse effect on other adjacent property. And I, I, I believe that that certainly, um, is the case here. There isn't any of those potential impacts based on this basically two lot subdivision of an existing developed lot. Uh, in addition, um, there are several other considerations, uh, um, that the commission should take into account when granting a waiver. One is whether there is some unique circumstances, uh, involved in this, uh, property. Um, and it, I would note that one ninety-eight Shore Road is quite a large lot for the neighborhood. In fact, uh, I looked at the assessor's records and it is the largest existing waterfront lot along Shore Road's entire length from Lampier Road all the way down to Palmer. It is the biggest lot on Shore Road, uh, on the water, and that makes it fairly unique, uh, in that most of the other lots are, are, are just at the forty thousand square foot um, requirement, or actually are pre-existing non-conforming and are less than minimum lot size for the R forty zone. Uh, second, um, I need to talk about the particular hardship that would be, uh, uh, imposed here. Um, if he was, if Mr. Lombardi was denied a re-subdivision of, of this property because of the flag lot, simply because he has the largest lot on Shore Road, that would be a hardship considering, um, he doesn't have enough land for four lots, which is what you actually would have to have to have to make the twenty percent rule. So, um, the biggest, um, lot owner on Jordan Cove needs this waiver if he wants to make a conforming, uh, lot. And I think that's a reasonable basis for a hardship under the circumstances. And finally, um, granting the waiver, um, um, is not in conflict with your provisions or the spirit of your zoning regulations, the P O C D or regulations of any other town board or boards or commissions. Certainly, your zoning regulations, uh, require forty thousand square feet. We've got, uh, ninety thousand square feet here, so we have plenty of land for two lots. Uh, your P O C D, the lots that are, are being formed are, are equal or very similar in size to all the other lots in the neighborhood. There still will be some of the bigger lots in the neighborhood. And as I said before, your Conservation Commission has already, uh, determined, uh, that there are no regulated activities from this activity. Uh, just a final note, uh, because there's only two lots proposed, there is no open space required, uh, for this re-subdivision pursuant to section five-four-five of those regulations. So with that, um, that completes, um, my presentation, uh, this evening. Uh, I'm available if you have any concerns or questions about the application. I think it's fairly straightforward and modest. Um, I, uh, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, and I certainly reserve any right of rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else here for the applicant attorney?
I, I do not think Mr. Bernardo was able to, to join us tonight. I was hoping he would be here, but, um, he's very busy and he's had some personal health problems recently.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions of attorney Sweeney? Before we open it up?
Yeah, you have a couple, a couple of questions.
Um, okay.
And I definitely, I appreciate your, your explanation on the, uh, particular hardship and, um, you know, the purpose for it. And also I spoke with staff too regarding this, and, and they kind of explained the, the reason for the twenty percent. Um, that may be another thing as a commission we look at. Aside from this application, but, um, one thing, actually a couple of things, uh, as you were making your presentation, came up. Now, there's another lot behind that shares access to this as well. The with the pencil, uh, property, is there also going to be some sort of reciprocal easement for that property, or how, how does that play into this?
Great, great question. Um, there's a couple of things. So the, the Lucy and Frenzel property is what you would consider a, a completely non-conforming lot. It has no frontage whatsoever, uh, on Shore Road. You can see that both lot one and even lot two are flag lot, at least as a strip out. So the, the Lucy and Frenzel lot was created prior to the requirement of all lots having street frontage. So it is what we call a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Um, so it looks very different than anything you would normally have. There's, uh, there are some of these in town, but not a lot of them. Um, it already is benefited by an easement over the property of Mr. Lombardi. So, um, there's actually a, a, in the deeds for the Lombardi piece and for the Frenzel piece, um, there is those, that easement, uh, in benefiting, uh, Lucy and Frenzel. And so when this subdivides, the new deed for lot one and the new deed for lot two will have as an encumbrance upon it, um, I don't mean to use fancy lawyer lingo, but there'll be, that easement will be noted on both the deeds. So both lot one and lot two will be subject to the rights of Lucy and Frenzel going forward. So I hope that answers your question.
Yep. No, I mean, it was more of a curiosity when I saw it.
Ken, can I do just a follow-up on that topic, uh, real quick? Um, ju- my, my question on that is, is attorney Sweeney, I assume that you've looked at the easement uh, in favor of the Lucy and Frenzel property and that there's nothing in that easement that would require their consent to adding another residential property to that, um, uh, you know, burdening, if you will, that, that existing easement.
No, I, I'm not aware of any private right, um, that would limit, um, our ability to use that access way for additional users. Um, I, I'm not aware of anything in that easement that would do that, and that would be a very unusual term, quite frankly, because, um, typically restrictions like that, um, are restrictions on the property that's being burdened. It would be a restriction, um, that basically Lucy and Frenzel couldn't subdivide their lot and come over this lot, not the other way around. That's how you would typically find that. Uh, but no, I'm not aware of anything like that.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Go ahead, Ken. Sorry.
No, no problem. The o- the other question, actually, just as I'm looking at this, and, and I may be mistaken, and I'm not, I can't point to the exact regulation at the moment, but the minimum buildable area and minimum buildable square required for these.
Yes.
Are, uh, and maybe because it's sewed, it doesn't really apply, but I, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that those cannot be in a regulated area, which the inland wetlands would be. And maybe I can't see on the screen that well, and maybe I'm, I just want to make sure that we're not.
So that the minimum buildable square, uh, the minimum square is shown on this drawing, and it may be hard to see, but it is actually out of the wetland area. Um, so I don't know if, Abby, you can sort of go around the, the minimum square. Um, it's hard to see there. It's literally just on that corner. I mean, certainly if, if, you know, that may be just an artifact of drawing, but we can shift it if need be. Um, it certainly can be, uh, accommodated, as you can see.
Yeah, as long as it fits, but I just wanted to make sure, and I wasn't sure if that included any sort of upland review or buffer area that it couldn't be in that as well.
I, I'm not, I'm not aware that the upland review area counts for that. I think it's, I think it would be if it, if it, and again, you're, you're, you brought up a good point. Both of these are watered and sewed as well, um, but I, I believe, um, the upland review and maybe Mark can weigh in on that. The upland review does not count.
Yeah, that's correct. The, uh, the minimum square is just for geometry. Um, as long as it's located at or behind the front building line, uh, there's no other restrictions to its, to its location. That's the minimum square. The minimum buildable square that you, that you referred to earlier is because of, because of the lot is sewed, uh, and water is, uh, is only a fifty by fifty square. Uh, that, that you can see on, um, on proposed lot one, like a dashed line, uh, that actually sits probably halfway up the lot and includes, uh, the, uh, new addition. Um, that needs to be dislocated within your minimum square. Anyway, the existing house lot does not need to demonstrate the fifty by fifty minimum buildable square, uh, because it's already a house there. It's already being, uh, being, uh, uh, used now for residential purposes.
Thanks, Mark, for clarifying that.
I guess I, and, and one thing to, in regards to the geometry that I'd like to make a suggestion on that rear lot line of lot one. And, and the reason why I, I bring this up is, you know, having a, that, that funky jut out. If there is a way that they could reconfigure from the corner, I guess it would be the, the, the south, uh, eastern corner.
Are you talking about that triangular portion right there?
Yeah, if that could be, if you could take, if it's possible to do area-wise, go from that corner and then just kind of diagonally hit the, uh, flag pole and kind of rob Peter to pay Paul to. And the only reason I, I bring the suggestion up is because the, that frontage lot fifty years from now, when Mr. Lombardi is no longer, you know, maybe owner or whatever, or maybe somebody else's owner of the property. It's just, uh, it's an odd geometry, you know, in the end. And I, I don't know if it's plausible, but it would be something that I would suggest that, that's looked into for the, for the final, the lot division.
So, so that, that's a great point, and I actually, Mark and I talked about this a little bit previously. Um, there's a, there's a couple of reasons why it's done that way, and I actually talked to Mr. Lombardi too, is, uh, I don't know if, if anybody knows Mr. Lombardi, but not only is he well-known for his, his, um, his gravel, uh, excavation business i- in the, in the area, but he's, uh, a pretty sig- serious gardener and landscaper. Um, so he had this drawn like this for a couple of reasons. One, he has plantings along the edge of the driveway that he wants to be able to control on his house lot. Um, so that was part of it, but the other reason is he wanted to make sure that, um, that this island in the center was far enough away from that, um, uh, from that, uh, um, property line, so he can get around it to work on it and do landscaping in that area. That, so there is an issue that we want to make sure that both lots remain conforming. They both have to stay over forty thousand square feet. Um, but, um, you know, we could take a look at that if that was something the commission wanted to, but really it was there for convenience for the maintenance of landscaping. And that was really why it was drawn the way it was.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at it from beyond today or tomorrow. I mean, for future owners, um, it may be, you know, they may not care about the landscaping, but I'm just looking at the geometry. The geometry is a little, I understand the reason why it's just a little bit, you know, odd for somebody in the future.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I appreciate your point. I mean, there's, there will need to be a pin set, you know, off that garden area for that, that corner. And, and I think what you're saying is could that be located a little bit more of a, a rational place rather than an arbitrary place?
Yeah, yeah. Um, that's kind of all I have at the moment. Um, if anybody else wants any other questions.
I, I have one or two, if, if I may. Uh, this is Karen, and I was curious, the twenty-five-foot access strip there appears to go over the brook. Is there any, is there any intention that that would be used as an actual access to the property?
No, not at all. In fact, I think, I think in our subdivision notes, it says that the, the access will be shared on the existing driveway. Um, and that was a question that the wet, wetland, inland wetlands commission asked us as well. Um, you know, we have no intention whatsoever of, um, crossing the brook there. Uh, if we did do that, we would be subject, um, to a wetlands permit as well, which would be hard to prove considering there's a feasible and prudent alternative in the shared access. Um, the other thing I would say is, you know, I don't know if any of you had a chance to go out there, but this brook has, uh, over the years eroded quite a bit, and, um, Mr. Lombardi just spent significant, uh, money doing a, a stream bank, uh, stabilization project all along the edge of this brook with the consent and the approval uh, of the inland wetlands commission, and he's been working closely with them to try to stop the erosion and stabilize those banks. So, uh, I, I don't see any scenario, uh, at least during his ownership of the property, where he would ever consider, uh, crossing the brook, uh, at that location.
Okay, and then my other question is slightly off track, but I'm looking at the general neighborhood and the lots that, um, are maybe two or three north of the current property.
Sure.
Do you, and I don't know if your, your group looking this up, but I'm seeing a lot of flag lots in the neighborhood already. Do you know the percentage of, um, existing lots in this, like, two or three-block neighborhood that are already flag lots?
I, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I would, you know, just in my looking at the, um, sizes of lots on Shore Road, um, which I was examining to sort of make the case that this is an unusually large lot for the neighborhood. I, I certainly saw them. Um, I think it actually, uh, in my mind, sort of lends credence to the argument that this is actually something that's very compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. There are a lot of flag lots, but I don't have a number for you. I'm sorry exactly, uh, how many there are, what percentage of lots, but, um, certainly, um, these, these types of lots seem to be, you know, fairly common in this area of town.
Okay, and then one follow-up, this is from Mark and Abby. Do we know if there's been a lot of pushback in this neighborhood with flag lots, or if other previous applications have kind of sailed through?
Yeah, no, um, I'm not aware of any, uh, there hasn't been any, uh, uh, pushback on flag lots, uh, down here. Um, one thing to keep in mind is that some of these lots may have been in existence, uh, probably since the forties or fifties, um, in those configurations, way prior to the town, um, even considering flag lots as a, you know, as a, as a, uh, regulation. So some of these may have been in existence prior to flag lots, um, actually being, um, uh, you know, you know, uh, established through zoning regulations.
And, and you've got, and you've got lot, lots like the Lucy and Frenzel piece where that's not even a flag lot. That's like, uh, you know, that's, that's not allowed in almost any town I know of, where you just basically have just an easement out to the road. Almost every town requires some kind of a strip these days.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I did actually have one other question as I'm kind of looking and pondering over this. Now, obviously, the area is, is good for two, uh, two lots. One is obviously on the, on the water side. Area is based on the mean high water. Over the years, I mean, you know, big storms obviously can come in and the property could get washed away, and there's a potential for it to be less than the forty thousand. Um, I mean, just because the sea wall's there today doesn't mean that it, you know, it'll always be there depending on a storm. Um, so again, I mean, I guess I'm not really sure what my question is. I just, you know.
It's, it's an issue that, that's an issue that plagues any waterfront property. But the general common law here in Connecticut is, um, that the right, the riparian or littoral owner, um, is both benefited from the accretion of sediments and is disadvantaged by the erosion of sediments along the shoreline. So, uh, right now, lot two is the much bigger lot. It's forty-seven thousand, um, square feet. Um, so is it possible that some of that may erode sometime in the near future? That would be a significant piece of the property. Um, and yes, there are sea walls there. This is a valuable piece of property as well. And so I think there is a, a significant, um, incentive for whoever the property owner is, whether it's Mr. Lombardi or the next owner, um, to preserve that land because of its value. So, um, that, that's sort of the nature of, of waterfront property. And I think, you know, from a legal perspective, when you make the subdivision, um, you know, when you approve a subdivision, you're looking at it at this snapshot in time. Um, and I think that's just the, the nature of waterfront property.
Uh, one final question I just thought of.
Sure.
The existing carriage house property.
Yeah.
Will that have any kind of an easement to give them water access?
Uh, that is not something that is proposed in, in the subdivision plan at, at this time. Um, Mr. Lombardi's intent is to keep that within his family and within his common ownership. So, um, you know, he doesn't intend to sell it. Now, down the road, you know, two parties can always, um, make, uh, agreements between each other for access. And I've certainly worked on projects like that, but that's not proposed at this time, and it's not necessary because the Lombardi's, um, you know, Mr. Lombardi intends to hold both properties, at least for the rest of his lifetime.
That's another, I, another question. Is there anybody in the neighborhood that's either giving a letter for or against us? Uh, no, I didn't, I had, I had a, um, I had one, uh, adjacent neighbor, uh, call just to ask questions um, on what the project was about. Um, I explained those, uh, to her, uh, and that was it. There wasn't any, any for or again.
Any for or against um uh responses to the to the notice.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we go back? I have a couple of questions. We you talked about an easement for the Lucy Frenzo property.
Yes.
But the the notes say it's an unrecorded right of way.
Let me take a look.
It's no, um. Survey notes three.
Let me see what I got here. Hold on a second. It is recorded on the map. Um, but it is not, it doesn't have a a separate instrument. The Lucy and Franz old map is on the rep map reference, so it's shown on a map as a right of way. Which is not an ideal way of showing an easement, um, but it is apparently that's how this one is recorded. Um, is on the map itself, and so it says it's on. Map reference two, which if you go to map reference two is the. Uh, improvement location survey for John Lucy and Kim Frenzel back in two thousand fourteen.
Do we have that?
No, we don't have.
No, you wouldn't have that. That's a private. That's a private easement between between those parties, so if if it exists. If if it exists in instrument form, I I was fairly certain that it was recorded, but uh that is what the note says. Uh, that it's an unrecorded easement that's shown on the map instead.
I guess, I mean, I I'm not adverse to having people do what they want to do with their property, and I I don't have any. Fundamental objection to this. I do have a concern about that, that we make a. Problem for the Lucy Frenzel people without them. Consciously knowing what's happening here if I'd love to see that.
They were notified. They did get notice of this public hearing.
Right, I I just it's just a concern if we make a matter. An issue out of this because it's really not, you know, we're we're making this. Decision based on it being an an easement, which implies to me when it was being talked about that it was reported. I it's a little. Little different for me, and I'm trying to think of. If I really have a major concern about it without it being solidified so that there's no problem later on, because because Mr. Lombardo could. Could sell these tomorrow, and then. We could have a problem. Right, where the people have a problem. So I know they were notified, but do they know that this particular? Uh, right of way, if you will, or easement, but I I I hesitate to call it an easement, this unrecorded right of way. Is an issue. And may maybe I'm the only one who's concerned about it. I don't know. I just um. It's different.
Yeah, it it my my recollection too, um. Chairman Mossad is is that that. House on the the Lucy Frenzel property has been there for quite some time. Uh, more than fifteen years using that driveway. Um, so. You know, whether or not there is a formal easement or not, there's certainly a mature prescriptive right to continue to to pass and repass over that. Um, and again, that's a civil matter. That would be a civil right between property owners, which typically isn't considered. Uh, in a subdivision application, but um, you know, I don't think there's any issue whatsoever. I mean, they've been using that driveway for as long as 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 their house has been there. There there is no other way into that property.
Greg, I actually kind of had a question regarding that. Is there sewer and water to that? Rear lot, and is there easements for that access as well? For the for the sewer and water to the. That rear lot, I call it a rear lot versus a flag lot.
There is existing overhead utilities um to that lot. I know that. Uh, based on the plan. Uh, I don't know the status of the um. I have no idea of the status of the um septic and water for that lot off the top of my head.
If there is a reference to a Fenzel water meter on the road, I I would presume that that would be.
Oh.
Of water, right? And it's.
Yeah.
There's a note for that.
It just doesn't show the actual line for the Frenzels.
It does. There is an existing water Frenzel line uh that runs underneath the driveway to the Frenzel lot.
It does say existing water Frenzel just south of where the addition is. I see that now.
Yeah.
Guess I was going kind of off of what Greg was saying.
Oh, there there's definitely a water line. You're right. If you it's right in the driveway that leads to them. That's what that line is, is a water line.
I guess I was more concerned about if it ever had to be dug up. Down the road, and there's no easement in that, nothing recorded for that as well. Kind of goes along with what Greg was saying. There's nothing formal in writing and. You know, I I know you can't cause a public health hazard if if the house doesn't have sewer, but.
But there's there's a statute now here in Connecticut that. For pro- property owners that share a a common private right of way. Where there lacks a formal easement or maintenance agreement. Um, that there is, there is the right to uh continue that access, to repair that access, and to contribute. In equal shares to that access, so absent it um, absent a an actual agreement signed by the parties. Um, the uh property owners who share a common private right of way, like a driveway. Uh, have rights uh over that driveway given to them by statute.
Can you just, the reason I asked if we had that map before is because I thought you were looking at something. That maybe we had, but you're looking at something different. Can you tell me what that map is? So at least I feel a little more comfortable that. That they should know about this issue.
Yeah, it was. It's an improvement location survey prepared for John B. Lucy and Kim C. Frenzel. It's their map. And it's it's something that Jock James Bernardo found. So if you. You see the survey notes, it's at the bottom of the second column. It says map references one and two. It's on the first page of the plan. And so this is a a plan that was prepared for the neighbors. Uh, and it was done by Dome Collins Engineering Associates. So it's it's their map. It's not even our map.
How did he find it? When you a map reference would be filed in the land records?
That's I'm that's probably where he found it. Is the land records. I don't know exactly where he found it, but that's I. What he's saying is is that in his his report, in his survey notes, he's calling it an unrecorded sixteen foot right of way. As shown on the map reference number two. So what he's saying is he's he has a a a map that shows this easement, but he couldn't find an actual easement instrument. Um, on the, you know, in the in the land records that says, you know, from Lombardi's predecessor to um Lucy and Frenzel.
Or or any sort of dimensions of other than sixteen foot, that that sixteen foot could go anywhere basis basically if there's nothing. Formally put in there.
It it's probably shown on that map, which is not a map I would submit with a re-subdivision application typically.
Would this, um, this question for attorney Sweeney. Uh, would this subdivision have any way have in any way affect? Any existing easements or rights of way that exist on the property?
No, I mean, effectively, um, you know, this this would not change anything in terms of the rights that they. Already enjoy across the property. Um, and you know, just because you divide it, that doesn't change the nature of the relationship. Between Lucy and Frenzel and the owner of the property. And and by the way, I I just pulled up, you know, I I don't I don't have any, I can't show it to you in front of you, but I just pulled up the assessor's card. For one ninety eight uh rear shore road. So the the property that we're talking about. Um, was actually built in nineteen seventy nine, and it is the only access. So that's twenty one. That's almost uh twenty one and another twenty one. So. You know, it's forty two years of access over this driveway to their property. So I, you know. You know, regardless of whether there is a formal easement or whether it's just simply that map. Um, you know, the Lucys and the Frenzels, just by use of this. Clearly have some prescriptive right to continue to use it. It hasn't been blocked. It hasn't been stopped. Um, they can't get to their house that otherwise it's it's by necessity.
So Greg, this is Karen. I'm noticing in the proposed motion that um there were some conditions about access and utility easement language. Could we include additional easement language about this other existing property, or is that beyond our scope?
Um. Let me look at the thing here. Yeah, the if I can, if I can just address that one, um, that was condition number two. Um, in the staff report where we were looking for um. Uh, access and utility easement language shall be submitted and reviewed prior to filing the final plans on the land records. Um. I don't know if it would be, um. I mean, I guess, you know, one of the things that make the determination here is whether or not. Outside of the effects that it would have on uh the proposed lot, lot one. Um, and lot two. On this, um, whether or not we would we need to require easement language for a lot that's not part of the subdivision.
I I really. I have I have no problem um submitting evidence post hearing that that lot has. Those rights subject to review by the town attorney. And if if those rights don't exist, or if the town attorney doesn't think that they are satisfactory. I, Mr., I have no problem speaking for Mr. Lombardi, um, that we will put an easement in place to preserve those rights as a condition of approval. You know, whether it extends beyond the edge of the subdivision, whether it's beyond what, you know, what your power is. I I'm not sure who would challenge that because I'm willing to do it if need be. So, you know, I will, I can get this copy of the improvement survey, which I don't have for you tonight that cited. Um, we can look at it with your staff. We can show it to Mr. Abina. If Mr. Attorney Abina is comfortable with that, we'll accept that, and if he's he's not, then we'll grant, along with the easement. Uh, over lot one in favor of lot two, we'll give the Lucy and Frenzel piece a similar easement.
Right, I think that's all it would be is just adding a different part. You have to bring it all the way to the edge of their property.
Exactly.
At the people if we can. I because I know you said it built in nineteen seventy nine. That makes me feel comfortable, but the map is only seven years, so.
Right, right.
That's only an acknowledgement of seven years, so I'm just I just want to protect them too, you know.
No, and that's and that's fine. I I don't, I I know that my understanding, talking with Mr. Lombardi. Um, he's close and has a good warm relationship with those neighbors, so. There there isn't a problem there. I think we all assume that those rights were there. And I I I think they are. Once we look at the map, there may be additional notations on there, and I thought there was an actual uh instrument somewhere as well, but. If that doesn't exist, we'll we'll put it there. You know, we'll put it in place as a condition of approval. We have no problem with that whatsoever. It's very reasonable request.
Okay, thank you. Any other uh questions for Ms. Attorney Sweeney? Before we open it up, we still have to open up to the public if there is anyone. No, nobody else for attorney Sweeney. Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to speak to? Application. So I'm sorry, would I would like to speak to public hearing PL dash twenty one dash nine, request of John Lombardi for two lot re-subdivision. For property located one ninety eight Shore Road. For a second time, is there any member of the public that would like to speak? To PL dash twenty one dash nine, request of John Lombardi Junior for two lot re-subdivision at one ninety eight Shore Road. And for the third time, is there anybody? In the public wishing to speak to PL dash twenty one dash nine, request of John Lombardi Junior for two lot re-subdivision. For property located one ninety eight Shore Road. Okay, hearing nobody. Someone want to make a motion to close a public hearing?
I'll move to be close a public hearing.
Second.
Removed by John and seconded by Karen to close the public hearing for PL dash twenty one dash nine. All in favor?
I.
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 All right.
Or nothing? Okay, we can move. We can move on to item number four, application review. And this is for uh PL dash twenty one dash eight, request of that associates to amend the zoning regulation section three point two two, three point two, two point one. Three point two, two point two, and eleven point two point eleven, as they pertain to parking or recreational camping. Vehicles. Any discussion?
I think, oh, go ahead.
No discussion?
No, just any discussion amongst the members of the commission.
I I think the only question I have for the committee is, are there any other? I mean, this is about recreation vehicle campers. Are there any other? Vehicles. Classifications of vehicles that we might. Also consider before we just. Go ahead with this one, or we are we only restricted to this?
Well, I what they've done is actually in in the zoning regulations definitions, it was a specific definition for. Uh, recreational camping vehicles. Um, the idea being that. If you want to add a. A use or an item to a regulation, you want it to match what's already what's already defined uh in the zoning rights. Um, so boats, trailers, recreational camping vehicles. I believe uh camping vehicle or campers, uh, things like that are specifically defined. In the regulations, and so that's what, you know, that's what's being proposed here to stick with what we already defined in the red.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other discussion? From the commission? John, I can?
Oh, yeah, I've just the one. So this is only allowing. The RV. Vehicle in the IG zone as. Regardless of any other zone, so it's only specific to we're approving for the IG zone only.
That's correct. That's correct. We're adding this to what's already allowed in the IT zone. Under section eleven point two point eleven, so we're adding just recreational camping vehicles to that list.
And also, Ken, clarifying. The residential. Portion as well in in section three.
Through section three, that's correct.
Yes, the question, I mean, I mean, is there a need to do that, I guess? I mean, I understand the RV part. Matt, I overall, I don't really have an issue. And that I just. Is there a need to clarify specific residential or?
Yeah, I I think there is, because right now uh it refers to all lots. And then that creates a um a conflict with section eleven point two point one one. So I think you have to do both in order to to get rid of that conflict.
So one quick question. They talk about trailers. Are those like the trailer campers or like boat trailers or just any trailer? So this is RV specifically, not the like tow behind ones? That we're including. In addition to all the other stuff.
Well, Mark, Mark, you said there's a specific definition for recreational camping vehicles, correct?
We are, and if I can, I can bring that up quickly in the reds here. Um. A recreational camping vehicle. Okay, is a mobile vehicular structure mounted on wheels. Designed as a temporary dwelling for travel, recreation, or vacation, including but not limited to self-propelled motor homes. Travel trailers not exceeding thirty two feet in length, collapsible tent trailers and truck mounted units. That's all falls under the definition of recreational camping vehicle.
Any other discussion by anybody? On the commission? On the commission? All right, Abby or Mark, do you have any commentary?
Um, just that I submitted uh. Review staff report with. Uh, findings and um, the motion also has an effective date associated with it. Uh, so that it can be incorporated into the regulations by that date.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, um, I move that the commission adopt the findings one through three of the staff report and approve the application PL twenty one dash eight. Uh, to amend the zoning regulations sections three point two two, three point two, two point one, and three point two, two point two relative to the parking of recreational camping vehicles. On residential lots and in addition, section eleven point two point one one. By adding quote recreational camping vehicles, close quote, to the existing list of uses. And that the effective date of uh, the um, regulation be amendment be September fifteen, twenty twenty one.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Karen. Um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four to nothing. Okay, we're all set on that one.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Dunn. And now we are on. Application review PL dash twenty one dash nine, request of John Lombardi Junior. Owner and applicant for two lot re-subdivision request for waiver. Section five point three point eight, five lots of the subdivision regulations for property located one ninety eight Shore Road. Our forty zone has shown up plans entitled Lombardi re-subdivision dated July tenth, twenty twenty one. Any discussion by the commission members?
Yeah, it seems to me that there was kind of a joint concern about the uh, act, the right of way and what rights are provided and. What impact it has on the neighboring parcel. Uh, I, I think the suggestion to. Submit the improvement map reference number two on exhibit two is a good one. Uh, and have it reviewed by town council to assure that the rights are of the neighboring property are not otherwise affected by the subdivision. Um, and assuming that that is the case. Uh, then the um, I, I'm not against that application moving forward, but if for some reason the town attorney has some concerns. Regarding the impact on those rights, I would suggest that the, there'd be further discussion between the town attorney and the applicant. As to how that can be um, repaired, if you will, through an active, actual recorded easement. Uh, to address that, that concern.
Any other?
And I, I would add that as a condition number three to, to uh, staff's uh, report.
Any other discussion on uh, the application?
Yes, I'm, I kind of fall on that same line, but I'm just concerned about. Proving it prior to, you know, being, seeing anything, I guess. I want to, I'd, I'd love to see it. I mean, I know it's, it's referenced. I know all that other stuff, but I definitely would want to. You know, I hate to push, kick the can down the road a little bit and then, you know, we, we haven't really seen anything yet other than what's referenced, but. That's just my, it's just a concern I have. I mean, overall, in general, I don't have an, an issue with the, with the subdivision. It's just. I mean, I know we're making conditions for this, and we're making conditions if it doesn't get built within a year. Um, I just. Those are just my concerns with that.
I mean, we could have, so if, if, if the town council has any concerns, uh, he can punt it back to us. Otherwise, I would rely upon the town council to assure that the rights are protected and it can move forward. But we can certainly provide that if he, if he does have that concern, uh, I guess it could come back to us just so we can address what that concern is.
Well, Abby, um, and, and Mark, let me ask a question. We have condition two, right, which is somewhat similar to what. Um, we would require in condition number three, for, for, for example, say, if. That was submitted and reviewed prior to the final plan on the land record, and there was some issue with it. What's the process at that point? Say we weren't talking about number three tonight. We were just approving it as is. With that easement and access utility or access and utility easement language. And for some reason, it, it wasn't appropriate. What happens?
So at, at that point, it could not be reported on, on the land records. It would not be, wouldn't be able to, to proceed with, with actually the, the final act of solidifying the, the. The subdivision itself. Um, so that's, that's where that language comes into play. Um. I don't know that we've ever had a scenario in which it wasn't able to be resolved between the staff and the various attorneys. Typically, if the condition is. Is made at the time of approval, then, then all parties have an interest in getting that resolved. So I would imagine that the condition would be similar here. Certainly, we can give an update to the commission, um, you know, on how it was resolved once that, once that happens down the road, the, the reporting timeframe. Um, but, but, but again, if it, if it wasn't resolved, then, then it wouldn't proceed to recording. And then certainly. Um, that kind of language that's in condition two would, would be that guaranteed.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, so it'd be the similar process for number three here. We leave it up to you. To, to, to you, all right, and Mark and the town attorney and the applicant's attorney, similar to number two. Okay. I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't know, Ken, if that satisfies your concerns. I, I get your concern. Um, but you know, it's going to be similar to number two, at least if we can try to approve it tonight. But what do you think?
I mean, again, I'm just, it's. I know it's on the plan. I know it's, it's somewhere out there in, in legal world. Um, that it's there. I just, I'm concerned just not, you know, again, if it's not there, then they can't go ahead with it, I guess, is the, is the end of that. So I guess overall, again, I don't have an issue with the overall premise of what, what they're proposing. Just again, I think it goes to what John was saying, just making sure that the, the neighbor is protected, you know, down the road. I, I mean, that's really my. You know, there's already, you've added, there's not only. There was one encumference, I guess. Now there's two lots there. So now you got a, an easement that's got to go through two lots versus one lot. So. That, that, that's all. I just want to make sure that it's not going to affect, you know, we're not going to have an unintended consequence with this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm. My feeling on this is we haven't seen that map, and that seems to be what describes whatever this right of way happens to be. And we haven't re-reviewed it, and I think the resolution is have Rob review it. Um, and you know, if, if in his judgment, it. Uh, there, there's, that, that the rights of the adjacent property owner are not impacted by the subdivision, I'm fine with that. Uh, if he feels that there are impacts on those rights, then I think we can certainly say that the condition would be there has to be a resolution of that issue. Uh, prior uh, to filing the plans on the land records, similar to what. Uh, Greg, uh, we have in condition number two.
I, I, I mean, I don't know that we can discuss it with Attorney Sweeney at this point because we're in commission discussion, but I think he in, in, intimated that they would. Um, put it to writing if that was the solution. So, you know, we could try to make that part of a, of the, you know, the condition that it's, it's sat, it's satisfactory to. Commission counsel um, before filed.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Sure. Yeah, the applicant also has, uh, if, if, if the commission is, you know, will go forward and approve. With conditions, applicant has ninety days in which to file the plans on the land record. Um, so, you know, it's, that should be enough time, I would imagine, uh, for any resolution that any issues that come up. Um, and they can also request an extension of that ninety day period if nine days goes by. So, uh, certainly there's time. Uh, once, once, once the approval is granted, uh, to resolve these issues, I believe.
I'm in agree with everything that was said. I just. If there was a map on file, I'm just curious why the easement wasn't shown. If, if there is such map. I'm just, I just don't know why that the survey would not show, even if it was a. You know, just two lines showing the, you know, the driveway is the easement, um, why that wouldn't be. I guessing, I don't know. I, I, that's all. But in general, I don't have an issue. I just don't know if there is a map, why we don't see it on the current map.
Well, I think the, the note, the note references is, I think enough to that, since that is wasn't the record and since we, the, the record, the, the hearing is now closed, we couldn't. Introduce or go find that other document. Um, the, the compromise resolution to this, I think would be that, that, that document is located and the validity or. Um, strength of that document relative to the rights it confers on that lot, for that lot, uh, be evaluated. And I think that, you know, there's certainly. Uh, you know, precedent for us having conditional elements of approval for subdivisions and um. And again, we had that, that fail safe of stopping it from going forward if there is not um, an instrument to be reported that, that specifically satisfies the condition.
Okay, I just, I guess, speaking my piece, that's all.
That's fine. You know, Ken, we have, we have a commission counsel. He doesn't attend a lot of the meetings because we don't really have. The need for it most of the time, but that's what he's here for, to try to make sure that our concerns and our conditions are met. So he, he will do that. I mean, if he was here, he might be able to do that tonight. Or he might have that map already, but he'll get to it and he'll make sure that it, that our concerns are taken care of, um, depending on how condition three is working itself. Um, any other discussion?
We just.
I, I have, I have one comment or.
Hold on, Karen, are we still talking?
I would say maybe in, in the, we should also, um, in the, in the motion, we should have, um. Add in the, you know, the justification for the waiver. I don't know if we should add that in there as well, just throwing that out there. Um, because there is a waiver request in this. I don't know if we need to add that to the motion as well, but that's for further discussion too.
Yeah, that's actually finding number six.
It is.
On the staff report. And we're, we're adopting this to the staff's findings as part of the motion, if, if we do it the way that's been drafted.
Well, I, I guess I was getting to the specifics of hardship and the. Not just general, I guess, whatever way I was looking at it. I understand what you're saying. I'm all set.
Okay, Ken, Karen?
I just have one comment about the flag lot language in general. I feel like we've. We've revisited this a few times with different applications, how. Um, there are some parcels in town that people want to subdivide. And we keep coming up against this twenty percent number and having to do these waivers. I'm wondering. If, as a commission, we need to kind of revisit the language of the flag lot to see if. There's something we can do to make this. A little bit more like user friendly to some degree. I mean, we're not talking about a developer that wants to put in twenty houses and. I guess I'm just wondering if there's something that we can do to kind of streamline this a little bit better, not necessarily in terms of this particular application, but in general. Going forward and what you guys think if that's, if that's a good idea or not.
I, I think that makes some sense. I mean, um, as was pointed out in this application, you need five lots in order to. Uh, qualify for the twenty percent and um. You know, maybe there's another way of, of, of boarding our, our regulations. Uh, so it's a little bit, a little more. Um, conducive to the development that actually occurs, where that you have those type of developments. So I, I think that's a good idea, Karen.
I would agree as well.
Yeah, didn't we, we approved one of these recently, right, Abby? And it was a two lot, and didn't we have that discussion, didn't we? Because I, I think I was the one who brought it up that we should, it should be in the commission discretion or something that we have the ability to. To, to waive that because it was a little restrictive. Is that, did, did we do anything formal on that?
We, we haven't, um, you know, we, we certainly have an ongoing discussion of multiple regulations that, that we're considering for amendment, and this can be added. To the list. When the subdivision regulations were adopted several years ago. I think that was one of the points that the commission, it was one of the few points that the commission in those regulations was a little bit on the fence on. Um, and I, and I do think that there, you know, the, the resolution at the time was. To adopt this language and then, you know, if it poses a problem, that there would be an opportunity to revisit if, if it felt like. There were, you know, more waivers coming in than, than were anticipated. Um, and so certainly, you know, we, we can, we can add that in. Um, you know, I have some, some draft language in kind of the back pocket that we can, can put up quickly and, and get in front of the commission to have the discussion. So.
So, um, I'm trying to look for it right now. What's the? What's the authority for the waiver? What's this, what section is that?
That's in our subdivision regulations.
Five seven.
Five point seven. Regulations are in the back.
Okay.
So section five point seven, five seven point one point one, there are A, B, C, three criteria. That the commission um, needs to consider. And then those are, those are the, the three conditions um, that Attorney Sweeney brought the commission through during the public hearing. Um.
Any other discussion on this? Um, Abby or Mark, do you have any commentary?
Uh, no, no, uh, from what was discussed amongst, amongst the members, I think, uh, we're ready to go.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, um, John, I'll, I'll move that the commission approve. Uh, with conditions, application PL twenty one dash nine. A two lot residential re-subdivision located at one ninety eight Shore Road with conditions one and two identified in the staff report. Uh, and also adopt the findings one through six of the staff report, and that we also add an additional condition number three as follows. That the applicant submit the improvement map reference number two on exhibit two as a new exhibit ten. That the uh, uh, map be reviewed by the town attorney to confirm no impact. On the rights of the adjacent property owners Lucy and friends, uh, Frenzel. Uh, and that if there is an impact on the rights. Uh, as determined by the town attorney, that there be a subsequent conversation with the applicant. Uh, with resolution occurring prior to filing the plans on the land records.
Has been a motion made by John. Has been, is there a second? Seconded by Karen. All in favor of the motion as stated by John? For uh, PL dash twenty one dash nine, signify by saying aye.
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 And.
Aye.
Karen, four to nothing. So we're all set there. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr.
Sorry about that. No, that's okay. Thank you, Chairman Massad, members of the commission. I appreciate your time and attention tonight. Just before I leave tonight, I want to know that while you were. Uh, discussing, I actually pulled the deed for the Lucy Franzel property and the easement is listed in the deed. So I'll be making sure to get a copy of the actual deed. I, I knew it was recorded somewhere. It's actually in their deed and I will get it to, uh, Mark and Abby tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No problem. Take care, everybody. Thank you again tonight.
Thank you. Um, okay, moving on to item number five, correspondence. Do we have anything, Abby?
Nope.
No? Okay, number six, commission business review of past months and ongoing projects.
Sure, um, there's not a huge amount of change from, from our last meeting. August tends to be a fairly slow month. There's, um, so, so as we talked about last time. Um, the, the Gabriel's Martial Arts uh, conversion to mixed use is ongoing. They're starting framing this week, so there's a kind of a jump ahead in, in the work being done there. Um, the Mango Point Office Building, if folks have driven by there, there's some good progress being made on that one, which is, which is good to see. Um, site work for the Willets Avenue Apartments is, is well underway. We are doing site checks. Um, routinely for ocean sediment controls, and it sounds like there may be work beginning already on the sewer line for, for that property. Um, again, Hartford Healthcare is, is still progressing toward occupancy, so, so they're doing, doing well there. Um. And we have had, we're working on meetings with the developers and attorneys involved in the road acceptances for CBU Terrace and Catherine Court. Those are two subdivisions previously approved by the commission that folks are, you know, we're really trying to find, you know, finalize those punch lists and get everything done so that we can bring things to the RTM for acceptance and folks can get their trash service and school buses and particularly on Catherine Court with the with the slope, there's snow plowing for the winter. So we're trying to make sure folks that are residents have those services as soon as we can get them. So those are all items that we're working on with the attorney arena and and we'll let you know as those are getting prepared for for acceptance. So those are our past months. Under upcoming projects, we've talked a little bit about some of these before, but there's sort of additional discussion surrounding potential commercial development on Grove Road. And so we we requested and offered for some preliminary review to happen with that project. And so we'll see if the applicant takes advantage of that. The the forty units to building Pequot Apartments on Hartford Turnpike just worth of target is currently still under wetlands review. So so that should be moving through the decision process process there and will come to the commission shortly after. So I would anticipate within the next month seeing seeing that application come come forward to the commission. We've had some recent inquiries on future development at the Crystal Mall mainly from interests in the Macy's and Sears sites. Some some sort of fact finding missions to see what the current zoning allows. There's sort of last minute phone calls that have come in in the last twenty four hours or so. But but it's good to see some movement. And I think that's, you know, certainly, there is ownership interest in in supporting mixed use, you know, potentially adding residential to the site. There are certainly ideas floating out there. And as those begin to crystallize, I would imagine that there would be some some preliminary discussion with the commission about appropriate next steps as well. So that that will come forward as as those owners get a little bit closer, at least on the the Sears portion of things, we're anticipating about a month out before we hear from them again in terms of their their next steps. We are still waiting for the 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 application process to begin for the potential apartments on Route eighty five. This is the the two hundred plus apartments toward the end of Cross Road up on the hill. And and we're we're hearing that that may move forward fairly soon. We we haven't heard an actual date on that. And then there's ongoing discussion about potential residential development and sort of that cottage cluster vein on Great Neck Road. And so that's that's kind of an ongoing discussion that will keep you up to date on us as we go.
Wait, where's the, where's the Great Neck Road?
Oh, yeah, it's forty eighth Great Neck Road. It's next to Defender.
Right, yeah.
So so ongoing, there's just a lot of surf refining and and design changes as as that gets a little bit closer to an application. And then the only other piece, just a point of information, on September ninth, I I don't know how folks have been following, the the board of selectmen appointed an ad hoc committee to look at some master planning surrounding the Duck Pond and and sort of a rebranding of that area and looking at the future of it and creating for some the the master planning effort and then conceptual design to allow us to begin costing out and preparing estimates to to address capital projects in that area for things like dredging or trails or public improvements as time goes on to really help create that town center vision and and to realize some of that. So there will be a public meeting on September ninth at five thirty here at Town Hall, being auditorium, provided that nothing with over changes. And again, the the idea being to be the first public opportunity to provide some feedback on some preliminary concepts that will be posted up on our website. And then we'll we'll refine, refine those and come back with a final concept plan for the public to review later in October. That project is really trying to move that forward for the end of October to at least have the master planning and concept designs done so that the town can prepare to apply for potential grants federal trail trails grants that are coming open in November of this year. So trying to leverage any town funds that might be used for action improvements in that area. So as we go forward, you know, certainly, once we refine things through the committee at their September second meeting, we'll bring to this this commission at least sort of a quick summary and an overview of what's been going on, but folks are more than welcome and it absolutely encouraged to join us on the ninth. If you have any interest or spread the word, you'll start to see flyers and social media posts coming out pretty soon.
Okay, great. Thank you. On on the administrative review, we got the link to those amendments. I spoke to Abby today. There were a hundred and thirty nine pages. We're going to have them printed and distributed to everybody, so you don't need to print them if you didn't. And and maybe if we can look at them for the next meeting to come up with a schedule as to which ones we want to tackle first and 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 in order. I'll be honest, I didn't get a chance to look at them this weekend. I honestly thought this meeting would probably be canceled tonight because we were supposed to be under doom and gloom and no power. By the time we found out it wasn't, I didn't have time to look at. So why don't we just look at those at the next next meeting? If you don't have them printed, don't, we'll get them to you and everybody will have a printed version. So that's it for tonight, but I do have one comment, Abby, and I wish attorney Sweeney was still here, but when he submits that deed tomorrow and it's a little late at night, I'm a little foggy, I think, but I'm not sure that their deed will be conclusive. Because they're the dominant parcel, we'd have to check it, make sure it's on the subservient or the subservient parcel. So just please make sure that we do protect that. And I should have mentioned that to him if I had thought quick enough, but the Lucy property deed is not going to be enough.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that as soon as he gets it to us and then bring that up with the attorney as well.
Okay, Abby, just one quick thing, but I I did take a quick look at some of the regulations that you passed out and just when on the accessory apartment changes, just one thing I noted is they they all the changes relate to accessory apartments and to accessory affordable accessory apartments. But the whole regulation has says nothing about accessory buildings, all the edits. Did it just fall out? I so if you could just look at that again.
I think, yeah, I think it was the definitions, we modified a little bit to, I thought, and I'll go back to make sure that that was included, that we modified definitions to take out whether it was attached or detached as a as a condition because this legislation doesn't differentiate, but I'll go back and take a look.
Yeah, all I'm saying is that the the newly revised doc document talks about accessory apartments, accessory buildings and affordable accessory apartments. Then when you look at the text of all the regulation that follows behind it, it only talks about accessory apartments and only talks about affordable accessory apartments. Appears to say nothing anymore about accessory buildings.
Okay, perfect. I'll make sure.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from anyone?
Just one quick thing on the minutes. Just changed the one instead of NDDP, it's NDB as in boy. I know we we approved the minutes, but I was trying to get in before we approved them. It's
Yeah, that's the quick clerical thing, we can fix it.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, it would bug me if I didn't say anything, so.
Okay, anything else? Move to adjourn. Enjoy the last couple of weeks of summer. Motion to adjourn has been made by John, seconded by Ken. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.